All right, I want to call to the regularly scheduled meeting of Murphy'sboro Unit District 186. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Runge?
Here. Our next item is a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Seifert, would you be so kind? You tried to hide it.
Yeah, I did.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Godey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
And I will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which entails District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 8/20/19, Tri-County Minutes dated 7/10/19, Tri-County Minutes dated 8/21/19, Tri-County Bills for September 2019, applications and reports. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 Bills for September of 2019. Does the board have any questions of Mrs. Bush? No one?
Um, yes. The figure check at page 11. Uh, speech pathologist contract with Shawnee.
No one?
Tell me what that is. We have a speech pathologist that works in this building that we contracted with Shawnee School District and for 40% of the time. And then we pay that, that cost upfront for the year for her, 40% of her salary and benefit package. She works in this one, this building.
And that doesn't come from, like, Tri-County doesn't supplement that?
Tri-County is in this building as well for their students. But they're also, we have students that are in Head Start and are in SNU Early Childhood Programs that have IEPs for speech, and so we have to provide those services.
And why does it Head Start pay for that?
Because they're still, if they're Murphy'sboro kids, that's...
Still part of ID.
They're identified with IEP or speech.
Right, and at Head Start that they're in.
Right. And, um, there was administrative iPad and laptop purchase. Do all administrators get new iPad and laptop when they start? Or was that typically yes?
Anyone else? And I will entertain a motion to approve the District 186 Bill as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi? Yes. Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Runge?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is communications. Do we have some?
We do.
Several.
The first one, Mr. Ellemeyer, please accept this letter as a formal notice that I am resigning from my position at Front Office Secretary. My last day of employment will be September the 20th, 2019. I appreciate the opportunity that you have given me. Sincerely, Renee Rolwold.
Administration recommends the approval of her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was that my second item here? Opposed? Motion carries.
With a sad heart, I will not be returning to MMS. You all have been wonderful to me. I know this is the worst timing ever. I'm going to be manager of the farm since my dad has passed away and my mom is still working. This will allow me even more time with my family. Thank you for everything. Let me know if there's anything else I need to do. Sincerely, Tasha Feigst.
Recommendations to approve her resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Murphy'sboro High School, I am resigning my position as Good at Murphy'sboro. I have enjoyed my time working here, but I have been offered a position at Carterville High School. I've decided to take this position because it is closer to my home. Thank you for employing me and a special thank you to George Marshall. My last day here will be September the 6th, 2019. Angela Dillinger.
Administration recommends her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Murphy'sboro CUSD 186 Board of Education. I am writing to inform you that I have been accepted to Concordia University to pursue a Master of Curriculum and Instruction degree with a concentration in trauma and resiliency in educational settings. As a district, we have begun to recognize and appreciate the impact of student trauma and work toward building resilientcies necessary to overcome trauma and bring about student success. It is my desire to learn more about recognizing trauma and identifying the ways to build resilientcies in both our students and staff. It is my sincere hope that the knowledge and skills gained through this program will benefit not only my classroom practice, but also students and staff throughout the district. I'm asking for your permission to pursue this course of study and to be able to add the completed hours and degree to my salary at the appropriate times. If you have any questions about the degree program or specific courses I am taking, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Darlyum.
The recommendation is to approve his graduate work.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter to inform you that I will soon be approaching my due date for baby Awfield. My due date is set for November the 19th, 2019. However, as you know, that date can change. I would like to work up until my due date if all possible. In a perfect world where I work until November the 19th, I plan on taking a maternity leave from then until January the 10th. I would return to work on January the 13th. If I need to leave earlier than November the 19th, then my time off will change since I am working with 23, six slash personal days and the holidays only. I have spoken with Heather King, and she's planning on teaching in my classroom during my maternity leave. Based off of her knowledge of the students and the grade level, I am confident that this will be a successful transition for her and my students. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. Thank you for your support during this exciting time for my family and I. Shelby Awfield.
We recommend her leave of absence.
Entertain a motion to accept that. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the Murphy'sboro CUSD 186 Board of Education, I have recently enrolled in the graduate program at SIUC for curriculum and instruction. I plan to complete a master's degree in CNI in the next few years and would ask that this step be applied to my pay when completed. Thank you in advance for this opportunity to improve my instructional practices. Sincerely, Michelle Hiza.
And the recommendation is to approve her graduate work.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it. Next item is fishbowl items, and I think... Do we have one?
Actually, I have two items from Mr. Ellemeyer. Congratulations to MHS math teacher Kelly Koberstein. Kelly has been selected as a finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This is the nation's highest honor for teachers of math and science for 35 years and counting. Three state-level finalists for math were forwarded to the National Selection Committee last month. The National Committee will select one math finalist from each state to be notified by the White House, invited to Washington DC, and receive $10,000. If you see Mrs. Koberstein, please tell her how proud we are of her to have her as a teacher at Murphy'sboro High School.
Also, Mr. Ellemeyer says the MHS Devil Grounds Coffee Shop was featured in the September 3rd edition of the Murphy'sboro Times. The money they raised by providing before-school coffee to students and staff helps fund multiple scholarships to seniors. As well, we fund at least one water well in poverty-stricken areas of Africa. MHS would like to officially thank I Am Java. They have offered to donate coffee grounds to the cafe for the rest of the school year. This comes as a huge savings to the coffee shop, allowing for more scholarships and wells to be afforded. As always, thank you to Mr. Gut and the students who work in the coffee shop every morning.
Good job, Mr. Gut.
And I must say, the coffee is good. They do a great job of running that, so congratulations. And congratulations to you two as well. Okay, that's it? Item number nine is Freedom of Information Act request.
We received one today.
Okay.
The MEA is foraying for the, all the health insurance premiums and payments from FY 18, 19, and 20, and all contracts, quotes, and designs from Hersh Roychey Engineers all the way back to 2010, and Ms. Bush is working on that.
Okay. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please come forward, and Orland, you've done this before, so please state your name once you get up here.
Arlon Brown, Murphy'sboro High School, history and government teacher and citizen of the community, I would like to add. So I'm kind of addressing the Board in both roles, if you will. I'm told that it's been almost 50 years since there's been a work stoppage in Murphy'sboro by the teachers, and it's a vague memory for just a few people, probably. But the ones that I had talked to stated that although the work stoppage was short, repairing the relationships took years. And of course, all of us would like to avoid that, I'm sure. The state of Illinois recently emerged from a dark age of education, and I'm sure many of you know what I'm talking about with things like short funding, waiting forever for checks to arrive, checks not being what they were promised. We all lived through that for 10 to 15 years, and it was a nightmare. An obstructionist governor was forced to recognize that the funding formula in the state was skewed the wrong way towards districts like ours, and that something had to be changed. Now, we have a new administration in the state who are committed to funding education appropriately. We have a new funding formula that recognizes districts like ours need extra help, and we have significant new monies put into that, those programs. Millions of new funding for high-poverty districts. The checks now arrive on time. There's no waiting and wondering. We can plan ahead. And for the foreseeable future, that's what it looks like it's going to be. And I'd like for you all to realize who is responsible for this. And in a large part, I would have to say that it is public employee unions, it is teachers' unions, it is your teachers who are responsible for this new reality in funding of education in the state of Illinois. Our teachers went to great lengths to contact legislators, to push our political connections to get something done, to... We testified in, to the General Assembly in hearings about education and the state of education in southern Illinois. We did that. We demanded investment in the future of education. Now, over the period of 10 to 15 years, when we were scratching and clawing and negotiating contentious contracts for one year at a time, teachers' salaries and compensation were relatively flat compared to cost of living and inflation, relatively steep. Now's the time to change that, and I would urge the Board to recognize who is responsible for this new reality and... And don't, don't make the teachers beg. Don't make the teachers walk out to compel you to do the right thing. Do the right thing because this is the time to do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other employees?
Am I in the right spot?
You're good. As long as you speak loud.
Okay, I'll do my best. My name is Becky McNeely. I teach 4th grade Special Education over at Crowther's. I just wanted to say that it really breaks my heart to see the way that our community has been divided year after year after year. I've been in this district for upwards of six years now, and there has not been one negotiation that I can remember, either as a student teacher or now as a certified teacher employed in the district, that was handled respectfully. And I think the fault for this does lie on both sides. We are losing excellent educators year after year. You guys have heard some of the, just snippets of the amazing things that our educators are doing in this district, and again, that's just scratching the surface. But we're losing excellent educators year after year, simply because we do not have good benefits or competitive wages. We have had a $3.5 million surplus in general funds last year alone, and this is more than enough to provide our teachers with the pay raise that we have requested, a pay raise that we truly deserve. This is, the district spent over $60,000 just between September of last year to July of this year alone to hire a lawyer to essentially fight with our teachers. What kind of message does this send to our community? What kind of message does this send to our kids? I don't know about you, but I can think of a million other ways that that money could have been spent, that in... Sorry. I can think of a lot better ways that that money could have been spent to benefit our kids and our children. We all want to see our district succeed. We want to see this community thriving, but we can't get there if we continue to work in opposition. We can't get there if we continue to be disrespectful to one another. It takes everyone cooperating and working together, and I truly believe that it starts with learning to respect each other at a very basic level. Respecting each other's families, each other's thoughts, each other's feelings and concerns. I think it starts with not seeking our own interest, but rather looking to the best interests of others that have been placed in our care. We as teachers daily put the interests and needs of our students, some of whom are your very own children, above our own, and we are simply asking that you do the same in return. We are not asking for a raise because we want to design our shoes or expensive cars. We have teachers that are struggling to make ends meet and provide well for their families. Just from my personal experiences last year, my son went the first several months of his life without insurance, simply because there was no way me and my husband could afford the district's plan and still have a roof over our heads, nor could we afford state insurance. When push came to shove, my husband took on an additional part-time job just so that we could get insurance through that, through that third party. That's just one personal example of my, from my experience. We have many, many other experiences to share about how the lack of care financially from our district has affected our families. We're not numbers on a page, we're families. I ask you, I ask you to think, is this how you would want your son or daughter to be cared for by their employer? Again, I know that we have a long way to go on both sides, both sides of the table, to reach a respectful, right relationship between our Board and our teachers. I know that. But I truly believe that offering your teachers a fair, competitive contract is a great place to, great place to start. Let's put down our weapons, our bitterness, our anger, our preconceived notions, and let's begin working together towards a brighter and better future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next item is, we'll move into old business. First item under old business is school facilities. This is an informational item.
Yeah, and this is just a quick update. The track is being laid. Hopefully, it'll be done by this Friday. This Thursday, the General John A. Logan Playground will start to be installed. Once they get the playground installed, they will put down the undercoating. The middle school HVAC program, project is still done. We've not paid for all of it as of yet. We are still dealing with the discussion we had last time about liquidated damages. So that's where we're at with that, so.
When do we think kids will be able to be on the playground?
Mr. Seifert?
We're trying to keep it a little bit of a secret, but...
Because you're about to be wrong?
Hopefully, by the end of October.
So.
About two months.
Hopefully, not worrying about muddy winter.
Yeah, and that all depends on the weather. Make it start raining again, but good for the event. I think they said about two, two to three weeks of install and then a couple of weeks of safety service.
Sorry to ruin your surprise, Mr. Seifert.
We're telling the kids it's a Christmas present. We are sure it will be here by the holidays, but I'm really hoping that it'll be here while it's for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
As long as it's not on YouTube, the night your secret should be saved.
Now, on the track, they will have to come back to Strypit. They're only going to get color down this week. Strypit kept things local, so they'll hopefully come in maybe next week, hope it's on the weather.
Okay, thank you. Second item under old business is the IASB presentation regarding the Executive Search Survey, which was completed on September the 5th. Mr. Hilton is here to present this to the Board.
Yes, thank you for having me tonight. Let me do this. You have everything in here, right? And everything else, everybody else. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. We had great, great participation from the survey. We'll go through that. And I also want to give kind of a scratch copy of what a brochure would look like based upon your survey results. And again, you know that the brochure is going to be a little bit nicer than this, but this is something that we can scratch on and finalize them. So what you have in front of you are basically the quantitative pieces of the survey, that online survey that staff, Board, community, parents took. And I say it's part one because there's another component to this with me getting into the buildings and having conversations with your staff, administration, and then having evening sessions for the community groups. That's yet to come. We're still working on trying to get that coordinated and scheduled, but that part does not preclude this from being discussed forward. So this document is intended to serve the Board in three ways, and aid in the development of the search criteria. What are the challenges before the district? Leadership skills needed, and what does the Board really want in a new superintendent? As a resource for the Board's preparation for interviews with finalists. That would be the next piece of it. And then an orientation document as well for the new superintendent. In your hand, you'll see there were 386 folks who accessed the survey. There were six Board members, 118 staff, 187 parents, and 75 community members. From the Board's perspective, that's your first page, you can see there is a lot of collaboration on Acts with Integrity, Fairness, and an Ethical Manner, ensures the management of the organization, operation, and resources for a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, collaborates with the faculty and community members, responds to diverse community interests and needs, and then mobilizes community resources. And then also has the ability to successfully apply the legal requirements involved in administration and management of a public school district, including labor relations and the management of negotiated contracts. Staff members had 118 access, and again, their top was Acts with Integrity, Fairness, and an Ethical Manner, advocates, nurtures, and sustains a school culture. So something a little bit different from the Board. Collaborating with the faculty and community is a likeness, and also promoting the success of every student by facilitating the development, articulation, implementation, and stewardship of a vision of learning that's shared by all stakeholders was important to the staff. Parents, you can see there is alignment. Acts with Integrity, Fairness, and Ethics, the advocacy of the school culture, the promoting the success of every student and vision of learning, and then also the management of the organization that also includes that safe and efficient and effective learning environment. And then the community piece, again, Acts with Integrity, collaborates with faculty and community, school culture, and instructional program. So what is alike all, what is congruent between all of the groups? On page six, you can see that there is much agreement with Acts with Integrity, Fairness, and an Ethical Manner, collaborates with the faculty and community, responds to diverse community interests and needs, and mobilizes community resources, advocates, nurtures, and sustains a school culture and instructional program, conducive to student learning and staff professional goals, ensures the management of the organization, operation, and resources for that safe learning environment, promoting the success of every student. And then we also included the last one because that was highlighted for the Board. What didn't, it didn't appear in any of the other stakeholder groups, but I included in that because the Board had four out of the six who answered the survey as a high priority. So that has been included. On the back piece, then on page seven, you can see those that appear within your sample. If you look at your ideal candidate, that would be the pieces of the ideal candidate that are brought and in basically hierarchy order. Now, there were other questions we asked each stakeholder group about. Did they want the staff member to be a teacher or the next superintendent to have taught? The Board said 5-1, yes. Staff said 111 to 7, yes. Parents, 156, yes, 31, no. Community, 59, yes, 16, no. And you can see largely, there's a consensus, yes. You want your staff or your next superintendent to have been a teacher, to have been in the classroom. The next question asked about experience as a superintendent. And here, there was a little bit of, I don't want to say disagreement, but a little bit of differences. The Board said 6-0, yes. The staff was 74, yes, 44, no, so pretty strong. And then the parents and community were like, eh, 68, yes, 119, no, and then 34, yes, and 41, no. So in my mind, so the Board is the one making this decision, and the staff was pretty strong. I always say you can always put preferred in the advertisement I always say you can always put preferred in the advertisement and say, we'd like to have, uh, our, our next superintendent is preferred to have experience. But if he doesn't, then, you know, and is a quality individual and still he or she makes it to the finals, then that wouldn't hold, I wouldn't say, yeah, hold him against him. But that's a board decision. And you can see where the numbers fell out between all stakeholder groups. So on the brochure at this point, I put in, previous success in teaching and administrative experience is required with superintendent experience preferred. And then the last question had to do with residency. The board was four-two, yes. The staff was seventy-three, yes, forty-five, no. The parents were one-forty-four, yes, forty-three, no. And community, fifty-nine, yes, sixteen, no. So pretty resounding overall that residency is important to this community and to its stakeholders. And so I did put within the sample brochure that you have, that residence in the district is required once employed. And generally what I advise folks is when you get into that final round of conversations with the candidate, you'll have a kind of have an idea of what a good timeframe is, um, for that next superintendent to move. Is it a year? Is it six months? Um, just something that, that we'll have a conversation later when you get to that, before you get to that final round. Questions on any of this?
I guess I have a question for the board as a whole. When we have advertised for administrators in the past, we did away with a residency requirement that had a circumference. No? That wasn't an option here.
Right.
And I don't know if the board wants to make that an option. Or do we wanna stay with a strict residency clause? I'm sorry.
I mean, I agree that the superintendent should live in a district, but I also realize that maybe there's somebody that's near here that maybe would consider applying, that has to sell a house, maybe, you know, already has children established in another district. It doesn't wanna necessarily make them, I don't know, I'm just not, I don't know.
Our, our current policy is a mile radius? Or is there, was our policy?
We changed, we changed that for the other administrators.
Twenty-five mile radius, center of town.
For everybody except the superintendent. So that's the question. Do we want to include the superintendent in that requirement as well? Or do we wanna stay with a strict residency?
I mean, like, like I said, the only example I have is, uh, at least we're at Carpentale. Sergeants, lieutenants, and all that have a nine-mile radius. Every department has, had, has to live in their city limit. And I mean, there's been guys that lived in Murphy'sboro that got promoted to chief in North Carpentale. I mean, they got substantial pay raised going from their position to a chief. And that, that was a requirement when they applied. I mean, that's the face of the head of the district, and you think they need to contribute to the tax base? I think they need to be.
I agree that they need to live in the district. I understand giving them time, though, if they need to sell a house or whatever.
Exactly, you gotta give them time. You can't just say, we hire you, you gotta move here tomorrow.
Well, I just wanted to throw that out to the board because that was not an option. And we had previously discussed it with other administrators. So, so everybody's good with keeping it, it is a requirement, rather than preferred. Okay?
Okay, very good. With that then, um, I think we're ready to talk dates. And I told Rick that I'd try to concise this this evening because I know you have a lot on your plate. You know, I would be thinking, uh, we're gonna go back and forth probably, Rick, a little bit. I can get the brochure posted probably next week. That would give us four weeks if we're looking the last week of October as potentially as a post, as an ending date. Uh, that would give us four weeks with all of the details. I've had lots of conversations with potential candidates who have contacted me about it. It was posted early. And candidates are wanting to know, you know, when's the brochure coming out? Ideal candidate, survey pieces. Uh, we have the ISA conference this week, and I know I'll talk to a few individuals at that that have asked to speak with me about the position. And so because of that fact, I think a good four weeks would give us the timeframe that we would need. The next piece is, though, when can the board meet with me on those final candidates? And I have a potential of... Like the week, you have your next board meeting in, what, November nineteenth?
October.
October, uh, well, after the, after we close it in October, it would be November would be a board date. If we close it on the twenty-ninth through thirtieth, I could come the week of the eleventh to fifteenth or come that board meeting, depending upon the amount that you would have in executive session because this would be the confidential, um, candidate presentation. It would be in an executive session whenever we discuss that. So a couple of options. I wanted to bounce it off the board and see, do any of those day work best? Or days work best? Because as soon as I can put hard dates within the brochure, we can start turning this out, and then people know when to apply.
So you're looking at closing this at the end of October, correct?
End of October. That would give us a good four weeks, uh, four-plus weeks with, um, the brochure and give everybody an opportunity. I know the folks that have accessed it right now, um, they haven't applied yet, which is, I, I would be, I'm, I'm glad they haven't applied because they really don't know, other than what they know about Murphy'sboro. They don't know, uh, any of the particulars, and so.
So then you're looking at coming back on the nineteenth, November the nineteenth?
Either, yeah, November the nineteenth or the weekend before, or the week before. Uh, I mean, it would take a special board meeting, the eleventh through the fifteenth.
Eleven's Veterans Day.
Right, eleven's Veterans Day.
That means not good to me.
That week, isn't it?
That's not good for me at all.
Okay. That week before that, eleventh through the, correct?
What kind of time do you think you're looking at, Jim?
Um, probably an hour. Because what, I mean, what I'll do in executive session is, is kind of go through each candidate, just a short synopsis of, of each one of them. And then you'll have your homework before you have your interviews. And, and so that, we'll, we'll go about protocol. We'll talk about, uh, the new, there's new laws now with regards to interviews and some things. We need to make sure that we, um, discuss with you and, and make sure that you abide by. I would say a good hour. I don't see it going much more than that.
If, if, if we're talking an hour, this is just my opinion. Not knowing what might be on the agenda for the nineteenth in a regular scheduled meeting, how would the eighteenth look for everybody if the week before is out for sure?
Only problem with that is that's the week that we're gonna be doing that Thursday in Chicago. So that would put us on Monday, gone Tuesday, leaving Thursday.
Gone Monday, you mean?
We're saying we're leaving Thursday for Chicago.
We're gonna be gone on Monday.
No, no, we're just saying.
We're meeting for an hour roughly.
We're saying meeting Monday, meeting Tuesday, Wednesday early night, then gone Thursday. This is busy, so I'm saying.
On the front end of the nineteenth.
We free this is out for at least two people.
Could you, I mean, a special meeting on the front end of the nineteenth? Meet at five?
No, I really do.
Can everybody make it here at five?
I mean, I mean, that's what I did, no.
That's hard. I mean, I'll do.
Well, I mean, how about five-thirty? If it's an hour, we're gonna, I mean, Jim, I'm gonna have, I'd have to hold you to the hour.
Sure.
I'll be here.
Okay, then why don't we, is that fine with everybody else?
Five, I can say five. Make sure I'm here.
Mrs. Yevalde?
Uh, yes, that will be five.
So we're gonna go on the nineteenth, and that will be five-thirty, and that will be.
I can be here at five.
Oh, you can be here at five, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that'll work with.
That works better, okay.
We can do that, you're here, and I always like to say captive audience.
Okay?
Okay. And then prior to that, I will probably ask you, Rick, to give me some interview dates. I can give you some times, et cetera, uh, for the number of candidates. But then if we could, um, get some common, common dates from the board after they see the materials. I know that the conference is there. After conference, there's plenty of time to get things in last of November. We've got first into December there, and, uh, we'll just need some interview times and dates.
Ideally, after you present us with those candidates on that night, when do they usually have the interviews?
Within a week.
Within a week?
Well, well, depending upon when, that's the week of conference, and then you have Thanksgiving in there. So it would be that first week of December.
Okay, well, that's not good for me.
I'm going second, third, that's it.
I'm going second of December. First week of December, I'm good. So you're looking, right, well, then, here's what we need for the board to do if they would. Sometime within the next week or so, and don't forget to do it. Please, just send me the dates that works best for you for interviews. How many dates do you think we're gonna do?
I would say less than good, three on the front side of round one. And if we do three, we can do, I mean, what's a good time to start? Is, can you not start before six? As, I mean, if you start at six, you can go six to seven-thirty. You may only get two. So if you have three, if we schedule three for two in the evening, um, that would give us two for six. And then you would need a couple of other days a week later for a second round. Potential.
How many candidates the first round?
I would say we, we always in that five or six round, five or six range. Generally, I mean, boards would like to see six. And, you know, if there's, based upon the criteria, based upon everything, uh, what we try to do is, uh, that's why after we close it, our committee then screens and screens it against what you're looking for.
Approximately, how many applications will you be bringing us?
I'll be bringing you six. I'll be bringing you the finalists.
So then what I, what I need for the board to do, let's, let's send this to Terry, so she can coordinate it all. Send the dates that you're gonna be available, starting with the first week of December?
I always say so. And Terry, what I'll do is kinda, maybe I can send you a, maybe a template to kinda say, this is what the interview format looks like. That way, when you start getting some things, you can go, oh, yeah, this can kinda fit together. And feel free to call, and we, we'll, we can schedule that and do it, so.
Let me just throw this out there. Is anybody opposed to a Saturday?
Oh, I just thought that myself, like, what about Saturday?
Some do. Some do a Friday night, Saturday, or an all-day Saturday.
It would depend on the Saturday.
I, I hate asking anybody to take up their weekend, that's, we give them a lot of time the way it is anyway. It is what it is.
I mean, that, that is potential, because I have boards who do choose to do that. Sometimes they start with a Friday night.
Sometimes, so, you know, it might get worse.
I just wanted to throw it out. I didn't know if it was an option for anybody or not. That's sound, and if it is, just put it down. But if you would, get that to Terry.
It's the thirtieth, next Monday, if work.
Like I said, what I'll do, Terry, is I'll kinda give you a little template, and we'll just walk back and forth and kinda talk through it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And then the only other thing that I'll need is between now and the time we close, so the whole month of October, I need access to the buildings. Building schedules, I need to meet with probably somebody within the district, Chris, to try to outline schedules. Because I've worked around teachers' workdays, I've done those types of things, and I wanna make sure that we provide an opportunity for everybody in the district.
What are you thinking about?
Well, I mean, I'm, I can do it whenever. Uh, I'm pretty flexible. So if it's during the school day, if it's, are there comment plan times? Are there, can I come beforehand?
How much time do you need with all the fact?
Generally, an hour at a time. I can, I can work with, uh, I think, what, you have, what, four buildings?
Yes, yeah. So in part of the time, how, how many in the group are?
I mean, I, we can work large, forty, fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can, I mean, the, the types of things that we do. And then I, what I'll also do then is provide some one-on-one time. Folks that, you know, don't wanna speak, uh, in large groups, uh, administration, and I'll do groups of administrators as well.
You want that early October, right?
Well, sometime in October, sometime before the, it closes at the end of October. I have the whole month to get it finished. I just need, I mean, we had conversations about using the auditorium for the community, et cetera. But this is that piece that I think is incredibly important. I noticed you have Friday.
September twenty-seventh is Friday. That's this Friday.
That's this Friday.
October twenty-fifth, that's too late.
Well, yeah, or, or somebody that I can call, I mean, I, we don't have to talk it through right now.
Yeah, we're just.
But maybe if I could reach out.
You're gonna be in Springfield, I can touch base with you tomorrow.
That'd be great. I'll get it. That, I just, is incredibly important that that next phase gets in, both certified, non-certified, just, just canvases your district and lessons.
Okay, all right. Pretty good. You did well. Thank you, Jim, and I'm, I'm sorry to put you under that, but you.
No, and this will be an updated schedule, too, that I will fill out and give to you. But this is what it looks like right now, and I think you have one.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. And you also have the comments from the survey. I just gave them to you, if you would like to, you know.
The rest of the board does?
The rest of the board does not have it. Generally, I just do one copy, and, um, but you can make copies of that and, and get it to the rest of the board.
We, I will do that.
Basically, uh, personal names were taken out and sure placed with titles. But, uh, that's just the kinda way that we do that on the redacted side.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item under old business is the district financial update. This is informational?
Yeah, we have received our first property tax payment. That is good news. Jan's gonna share with you some IMRF information. And I think the main things that we're just, you know, as, as she said in her, in her budget presentation, you know, the pension shift, property tax freeze, the minimum wage increase, those are all current issues. I would agree with Mr. Brown in the comments that we don't wanna return to the, to the previous financial issues with the state. We need to make sure we stay on the right track with that, so. Share out the IMRF.
Any, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Denofus.
Okay, I've got, handing out something out for the IMRF update. Can we circle back?
This is the savings from the retirement that we did, cost summary.
So, um, Mr. Groh did ask me to, um, at some point, once all the retirements were in that window, the June thirtieth eighteen, June thirtieth nineteen. Um, we had thirty-two, um, IMRF early retirement eligible employees. Um, and twenty-one of those, our employees took advantage of that retirement during the window. We had a few people retire during that window, but they didn't retire under the early retirement incentive. So there wasn't a cost to the district, and so I didn't include them. Even though there was a savings, um, there won't be a cost associated with their retirement. So, um, so we had our, our savings that we anticipated with thirty-two retiring was, was three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. Since we only had twenty-one, um, the anticipated savings of those twenty-one was two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, but we were actually able to save two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars in salary. We had a couple of positions, um, that we kinda melded together. Instead of hiring, rehiring, um, you know, shuffled some things around. And so we were really able to save, uh, the district maintenance, foreman retirement. Darren Ripley has really stepped up in, in that position and, and, um, doing a variety of, of different things. We also had a retirement unit office that we didn't replace completely. Kim Cheatham, uh, the pre-K secretary has picked up some of those duties. So, uh, we did have substantial savings there as well. So, um, with the, with the twenty-one people that we had retire under, um, the, our ERI program, we did have a larger than anticipated savings. And I won't be able to bring you back what the cost of the program will be until the end of the calendar year.
That's one of the things I think we should point out. That two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar savings that you're speaking of comes with an increased cost to the IMRF retirement system.
It does, and that's, and that's the offset.
And that could be two-hundred thousand.
Right, so we saved money in, in this capacity. Uh, we are gonna have an increased rate, and, and it's hard to calculate at this point because we don't have all that information from IMRF. And it's not just us, it's Tri-County as well. So the employee. So the employees that took advantage of Tri-County, that is also, hits our rate, because they, they're actually in IMRF books, Murfreesboro employees, Tri-County, because we're the administrative district, so. Until all that gets calculated, our rate gets calculated, we'll be paying more in IMRF over the next five years. So even though we do have, and that, and that's something we talked about with the board when we looked at this in, I believe, March of eighteen, that we would have a savings, but we were going to be spending, you know, we were hoping to break even, that was, that was the hope, that this would, this would be a break even. And so I think we will be looking at having a break even at that point. So just kind of wanted to update you where we are, that we did have, how many people we did have take advantage, and then I'll be coming to you hopefully in January, once we get that information from IMRF, and a little better idea. Now, the rate, the rate will still change as, with ERI, and it'll depend on the interest rate and the investments within the IMRF system. So, just kind of a FYI for you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Bush, I skipped over an item. We need to approve the District 186 Fiscally Hear Twenty Budget.
Yes, administration recommends the budget as presented during the budget hearing.
And I will entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Second? Second? Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brungy?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the Press 101 Updates.
We had no comments, and so the recommendation is we keep it exactly as presented, which is no changes, we're still gonna be five minutes and all that other big stuff with those pieces.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is the permission to bid for two seven-passenger vans and the approval to sell the district vehicles. We discussed this quite heavily last month, and Mrs. Bush has added some more items in your packet. I don't know that we'll have questions, but I will vote it in.
I'd like to know the findings from all the staff involved that you said you talked to.
Yes, and that was my, my summary, my recommendation is based on those conversations. I met with Mr. Morland of, of the high school band, I met with Coach Manwaring from football. I met with Mr. Tripp, who faculty in our automotive department, but also often gets called to consult with our district vehicles and issues that we have. And I also met with the maintenance department, and this is kind of the plan that we put together that would work the best.
Can you tell me what each person said? Each person said they want what you recommended?
This, when I talked to, we banned Mr. Tripp, Mr. Morland, Coach Manwaring, those, it's the consensus, what we need. Football, van are a little bit different in what they're loading, what they're transporting, to use a trailer. When we talked about, you know, looking at a Suburban, a pickup trailer, because a Suburban wanting a, needing a four-wheel drive, a three-quarter ton towing capacity in order to, to transport that, that trailer. And we've been doing that with vans, tearing up transmissions, you know, not, really not the appropriate vehicle to, to haul that. So we're looking at a, at a used vehicle, something I call gently used, also affordable, that we'll be able to, both programs and possibly other programs within the district will be able to use that vehicle. So, you know, we, I think we talked at length, Mr. Tripp and I talked, and, and as I said, banned in football, about what would, what they would, their needs, and so this is the plan that we came up with. Having the need, and, and really, the, the purchase of the new seven-passenger vans is more about our faculty, staff, and students going to professional development, students going on trips, having ten-to-thirteen-year-old vehicles, and it being a safety issue with some heavy miles and hard miles being on those vehicles. And selling to the old, old eight-passenger vans that we have for, for quite some time, so.
So this doesn't match what I was told. I was told both football and van both wanted a van, so that they could not only have the passengers in the van, but that it would also be able to haul the trailer, so this isn't really matching.
I guess one of the issues with a van, we said last time, it'd be too expensive for it to tow.
Doesn't haul appropriately.
So if they can't ride all of them in a van, some of the staff will have to get in a bus and ride with the students.
Yeah, but if we've got a van that was.
Three-quarter ton van that can pull is expensive, Mr. Tripp.
The biggest issue is the three-quarter ton vans become the fifteen-passenger van, which we cannot have.
I, I had somebody check, and they said there's a five-to-eight-passenger van that can haul up to seven thousand one hundred pounds, so that's.
But that's gross vehicle weight, and you're talking about that van going to be sixty-five hundred of it, two thousand pound enclosed trailer, mule, van equipment, stage props, xylophones. Now we're looking at, if there's any issue, you're gonna have an issue with, that van is not gonna be covered under insurance if we have an accident. And that would be the main concern that I would have with anything, is the fact is that gross vehicle weight rating being in there. You prob, you might be able to find a half-ton newer model excursion in the Ford or a Suburban that would still carry those same weight ratings, and that would be the one thing I would be concerned about, is the, our, our district being liable for that. I mean, we push the weight rating on those things with a trailer, have an issue. Still with a Suburban, you'd have similar room to what you have in our vans that they're using now, because I believe we have a front seat, which is two bucket seats, and then a bench.
The other eight.
And then there's another smaller bench, but you can get that in a Suburban, but you would lose a little space in the back. But if you're using a trailer for some of that stuff, you know, you, that could be made up in those areas.
Both, I spoke with, I believe it was Friday afternoon, was it Friday I talked to you? Thursday or Friday, with Coach Manwaring and with Ms. Morland, and we talked about a truck, we talked about a Suburban, we talked about a van. And both programs feel that the Suburban-type vehicle will fit their needs, and I spoke to the person over the phone.
So when you sent the email on the eleventh making your recommendation, you hadn't talked to them?
Yes, yeah.
You said you talked to them Friday.
And again.
Friday was the day the board packet went out.
That's the twentieth, though.
Or maybe it was, as I said, it was either Thursday or Friday, but I spoke to them, I mean, you can ask, you can talk to them if you, if you would like to, Ms. James.
In the half. So that's, I'm just, just not in favor of the, of the truck. I think we need to make sure that we get what, what the people say that they need, and I'm not sure this is it.
That's the job that she's already done, is she's already talked to these people and got that recommendation. And that's, that's, she deals with this on a daily basis, we deal with it one day in a month.
I'm just.
And that's her job. That's, that's the recommendations that she's bringing back.
It's just not the same story that I'm hearing, so. And I asked for a survey, because I wanted to see exactly what they put down, because right now we're going on, you know, what was said. I know what I was told by the different people that I talked to, and.
He was there when they talked to him.
Yeah, I, and then the Suburban, I said, I, you know, was that, the issue comes into finding that in gently used, as we go anything, and that's why I said, you know, if you could look at the GVW of those vehicles, maybe a fifteen-hundred with a towing package or something in a, the excursions, the Ford models, usually have a little higher GVW rating than some of the Chevrolets, so on and so forth, to where you can still have the passenger compartment that they were talking about, like, for coaches and that stuff, and still be able to tow.
I mean, even that three-quarter ton van, when it was towing the concession trailer.
Right.
When I was in van, it broke down in Missouri, and that's three-quarter ton van.
Right.
So I would rather have something that the football team and the van doesn't break down with, than have a van, just because they all want to ride together.
Correct. The vans are, the chassis on a van are not as designed for towing, whereas a Suburban Expedition are more designed like a pickup truck.
An extended cab truck would fit staff in the backseat of the extended cab truck, so they could still ride together.
You can get five, at least five.
And you could even go with a, now with the four-door vehicle, it's the same as what you can do in an extended cab, those are more popular now than the extended cab.
Frame, motor, and chassis on a Suburban excursion are exact same as a F-250 or a F-2500.
Correct, yeah, and that's what I mean, that's compared to the van chassis, which are lighter.
Right.
Which are more along the lines of the passenger vehicles, the smaller SUVs, you know, they're looking more along those.
I'm reading it says Suburban or pickup truck, whatever we can find with a reasonable price, so we're still not ruling out a bigger vehicle, we just have to find one.
So then I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand why we need two seven-passenger vans, because when we bought the driver's ed van, we were told by Mrs. Bush, that it was going to be used also for teacher trips. Because. No, but never. Professional, yeah, you said they might take it on that.
Maybe, maybe on a rare occasion, but drivers ed uses it every day.
And, and that's understandable, but that's one of the things that we were told, and so then now we need two more vans.
I don't recall that.
Which I think we could have maybe purchased something cheaper at that time.
That wouldn't make any sense.
My concern is.
Like a car or something, why do they need a van for?
I mean, it wouldn't make any sense to say that, that the van, the driver's ed van could also be used for conferences.
But he said, at the time. And if it's not gonna be used for conferences, I think what the point is, is we could buy a car.
Right, something cheap, yeah, and not have gotten the van.
When we bought the van, the, you know, we talked with the driver's ed faculty about the type of vehicle that they felt was the safest and the best to teach their kids in, and that's what they requested instead of it, because we talked about a car, we had that conversation about something, you know, a smaller vehicle, vehicle or a car, and that's what they felt was the best, you know, a lot of parents have that kind of vehicle, kids need to learn to drive something a little bigger, not in a smaller car. So that was at the request of our driver's ed department, that we looked at that purchase. And we're asking for these vehicles, the seven passengers, many of our teachers that take the eight passengers either aren't comfortable driving, they're big and they're boxy, they go to Springfield to a conference, and they go in one of the parking garages. There's not room to maneuver to get in there to park, space to park, same thing with Chicago. So then why are we buying cars for that? Because we, we have more people attending conferences and sometimes together, groups of teachers that will go to a grade level. And so the seven passenger, they have room for what they need, they have room for multiple teachers, and we have students, we're transporting students at times. So a whole grade level will go to a conference at the same time? At times, yes, yes. So, you know, we're looking at what fits the best needs of our, our staff and faculty and our students, and while being conscientious of the price point, paying for those out of our transportation budget, and possibly wanting to be, is out of the maintenance budget. They will not be out of the education fund.
Okay, so your recommendation, as printed there, is the two, two seven-passenger vans and approval to sell the district vehicles.
Correct.
And seek quotes for the four-wheel-drive, three-ton Suburban pickup.
Correct, and I would be consulting with what I consider to be our district experts on purchase, Mr. Tripp and our maintenance department. I will not be doing that by myself, so.
Right, then I will entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. And a second one. Second. Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
No.
Mr. Brungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number, well, we're gonna move into new business, the first item. Under new business is the library grant expenditure report, application approval, which is in closure, number one in your packet. This is a yearly application, Mr. White, Weaver White is the district librarian, fills it out every year. The recommendation is to approve said report and application. Questions from the board?
The only thing I can add is, I actually worked with this, on page seven, part four, you need to check one of those boxes. I would recommend the top box.
I will. Send that off to Mr. White, so.
Page seven of the packet.
Well, it's actually page, like, three or four in the packet, but at the bottom it says page seven.
Oh.
Oh, I got you, you got it, see it there?
Part four.
I got it, thanks. Can I see it?
Yes.
And you suggested the first one, library materials?
Yes.
We buy books.
And that's what, um, one of the pages is material, I think.
Yeah.
That's, that's what you just said on lunch here.
Right, yeah.
We, we buy books with library materials, we will check that box and submit it. If you approve it, as. Any other questions from the board?
You can check more than one of these boxes.
Yeah, but we just buy books, so. I mean, I could be on the safe side and check all of them.
Some of them are electronic books.
Other questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for new business, we have a need to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section Two of the Open Meetings Act, five Illinois statute, one twenty slash two C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity. Collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or given deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employee.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brungy?
Yes, motion carries.